Good evening. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after our meeting has concluded. Both sessions will be 30 minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach any one of the microphones in front of the auditorium. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments so that the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have 30 seconds left so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. Must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the Board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies 1400, 1410, and/or 1440, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first 10 rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to amend the order of business?
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy 2350 to allow the Board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the January 12, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through M, 2A through F, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve an exemption to the mandated school zone assignment policy?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education approve an exemption to a mandated school zone by reason of a demonstrated personal and/or family hardship in accordance with Board Policy 5110.
Second.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. We received one request this month from a parent of a student at the Salzman School District that has moved out and would like to request to stay for personal reasons. And this parent is aware that transportation would be required by the parent.
Any questions from the Board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Seiki, may we have the first discussion of the 2022-2023 draft school calendar?
Sure. Good evening. The 2022-2023 draft calendar has been provided to the Board for their review. As always, each year mandated holidays fall on different days of the week, directly driving the creation of the school calendar and closure days. This year's calendar, we will begin the school year with two superintendent's conference days on Thursday, September 1st, and Friday, September 2nd, and then begin classes for students on Tuesday, September 6th, following Labor Day. Of note is that we are not scheduling makeup or snow days. If there is a school closing due to inclement weather or any other emergency, for that matter, like a power outage, we will operate as a virtual or remote school day. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have regarding the calendar at this time.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Seiki. You also have a draft policy and regulation to discuss?
Yes. Draft Policy and Regulation 5460, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in a domestic setting. This policy and its corresponding regulation comes to us as a required revisions from the New York State School Boards Association. It has also been vetted by our attorneys at Gersi and Gersi as well as the Policy Committee. This policy, which is already in our policy book, has been modified to meet recent requirements relating to ongoing training of staff, specifically education law and social services law that requires school districts to provide all current and newly hired mandated reporters with written information and a training program on the reporting requirements of the law. The other revisions in here reflect the mandate of posting and dissemination of information about a phone number for the central register and how to access the website of the New York State Office of Children and Family Services. These mandates have already been put into operation. We distribute flyers in both English and Spanish to all parents and guardians each summer, as well as this policy and regulation. The notices are also posted on our website and throughout each of our school buildings. We also revised the word guidance counselor to school counselor, which is the title being used now. As we saw that, we have since reviewed our complete policy book and noted an additional 15 policies and regulations that will be adjusted to reflect this housekeeping change. The Board will see these changes in upcoming meetings. We also added that bus drivers are mandated reporters. That social service law provides for the confidentiality of all sources, including mandated reporters of child abuse and the maltreatment reports. Lastly, we added the mandated hotline information into the Board policy with the corresponding phone number. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board may have at this time regarding this policy.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, thank you.
This policy, as well as the calendar draft, will be issued onto the February Board meeting for approval. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Defendini, we have your monthly update, please.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Goldberg. Thank you. First of all, just an obvious new face at this evening's meeting. I wanted to welcome Mrs. Maureen Maloney to her first Board of Education meeting with the retirement of Dr. Ripley. We are pleased to welcome Maureen as our new Assistant to the Superintendent for PPS, taking responsibility for a number of departments, most notably Special Education and all issues pertaining to student services, not only Special Education, but social work, psychology, and other support-type services. So welcome, Maureen, to your first meeting.
Thank you.
I also have some good news to share with the Board of Education. Earlier this afternoon, we had another meeting with the committee to define or to decide upon a date, and we do now have a date scheduled for the Special Olympics. So with the support of Special Olympics International and Special Olympics Regional, the two different entities that govern all aspects of the Special Olympics, we will be playing host to the Special Olympics for Long Island North on May 21st of the upcoming school year, this coming school year. This spring, we will actually play host to our first Special Olympics event. So we are very excited to have this opportunity, to welcome varying parts of Long Island to our schools, to be able to celebrate and be a part of all the festivities that are the Special Olympics. So it is a very exciting opportunity for us. For those of you that might not remember, this was supposed to be hosted by us back in 2020, obviously after March 13th, the date in which schools shut down. That was no longer possible last year. Based upon the concerns, the Special Olympics was not able to host the event, but this year they are back on. They asked us to consider hosting them, and of course, it's our great honor to do so. One other point with regard to the Special Olympics. Again, a formal announcement will go out from Dr. Brennan's office in the coming days. After that announcement comes out, the community will be getting correspondence from my office looking for volunteers. So this is an entirely voluntary effort, and we are going to need a lot of support. And I have no doubt in this community that we will get that support. I've always been very proud of this community and the amount of support that comes when we are in need, and this is an instance in which we're going to need our volunteers to step up. So again, expect more information about volunteer opportunities over the course of the next several weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini.
Again, I'm sure the Board will report out a little bit on the holiday concert series that we were a part of before the break. Tremendous outpouring of support from the community. Kids were outstanding, as they always are, even with the limited practice time that they had. The concert was fantastic, and we couldn't be any more proud of the effort. Aquatic Center update. Again, you can now see, because the screening fence is down, the permanent fence now is actually up, so people can, I think, more easily see into the complex and get a feel for the progress that we've been making. It's been all hands on deck. The progress is going on as expected. We are about entirely enclosed, meaning the last piece of the north-facing wall needs to be built. The glazing system needs to be put into play, but once that is done, the entire building will be enclosed. We are waiting on the heating systems to be fired up once we have our providers install the final gas service. Once that happens, we turn our attention to finish work and getting on the inside, tile work, painting, and all those final pieces of the project. But we are moving along really well, and we do expect, again, to be able to open up the complex in its entirety to the community on or about April 1st of this school year. So again, we're making great progress there, and we are excited to have a groundbreaking ceremony and to turn this facility loose to our community. That'll get great use out of it. Last piece of news that I have to share is just an announcement that went out from the buildings, but not something that might be universally known. With thanks to Mr. Motisi and the Transportation Department, it has been an extremely challenging year in transportation, but as a result of route restructuring and maneuvering, we finally turned on zero-period transportation at the elementary school. So we now have zero-period buses that are planned for operation. And, you know, we are excited to be able to turn that piece on now for our children and for our community. Just another thing that we're bringing back after having had some significant challenges at the beginning of the year with staffing-related concerns. So with thanks to Mike and his team for being able to get that off the ground. And that's it for me, Mr. Goldberg.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Defendini. Okay, so the Board of Education is aware that County Executive Blakeman recently signed an executive order on the issue of mask mandates in schools. As clearly stated by Governor Hokel and Commissioner Rosa, the state mandate for mask-wearing in schools supersedes any executive order issued by the Nassau County Executive. The Governor's Office and the New York State Department of Education have also made it clear that any school district that chooses to defy the state mask mandate runs the risk of losing state funding. Given these very clear directives from the Governor's Office and the New York State Department of Education, and upon the advice of legal counsel, the Farmingdale School District will continue to comply with the state's mask mandate and other COVID-19-related protocols. Our overriding priority is the collective health, safety, and well-being of every student, staff member, and resident of the Farmingdale community. The Board of Education has no plan at this time to vote on the issue of masks in schools. At this point in time, I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. If we do not get to all of the speakers during the first 30 minutes, we will reopen later in the meeting to continue. The meeting is now open for 30 minutes.
My name is Nicole Noffo. My address is on file. It is to my understanding that you, Paul, and the rest of the Board were for parental choice prior to the start of the 2021 school year. Sadly, that was stripped away from us. As of last week, our new county executive is giving us back local control and parental choice. The ball technically is in our court. I have looked and researched and have found zero, zero laws from our governor who is implementing these unlawful mandates on our children. I also learned that the DOH and the New York State Department of Education don't make laws, only regulations. This so-called mandate did not get passed in the New York State Assembly and was not signed by the governor. So now, our tyrannical governor is threatening school boards yet again with funding. The governor cannot legally withhold funding, state aid, to the schools. It is also to my knowledge that state funding comes from our tax-paying dollars. So why are we allowing her to bully us and you? The district has a strong no-bullying policy, but yet, here we are, allowing our unelected governor to make threats along with Betty Rosa, who also who also cannot implement unlawful mandates. When are you, as a school board, going to stand up and say enough? This is coming on to three years. Masks are not working and are only causing more harm than good. You want to remask? That's totally fine. Everyone wants to follow the science, but yet, no one is looking at the science about how detrimental this is for our children, especially special-needs children. When are you going to say enough is enough? You say dealers are strong, but I'm not witnessing strong with the Board. I'm seeing weak leadership. If you cared so much about parental choice in our children and stopped selling our children, you will stand up for our rights and our children's rights. This is a public school, not government-run schools. So I'm asking you, please, as a parent to a four- and a five-year-old, to add a vote to the agenda next month to bring back local control and parental choice. It's in your court now. Thank you.
Jeff Roth. Address on file. Yeah, your collective consciousness is infallible, I'm sure. People are going to realize. Listen, January 10th, the district launched the virtual after-school tutoring support for the quarantined students. Over the years, when the rankings were released for advanced placement and international bachelorette programs, I questioned why I never heard at any of the meetings on plans to offer a virtual distance learning prep course so as to increase test participation and ranking. So for example, Spring 2021, Jericho, 7.75%. Herrick, 6.10%. Manhassel, 5.67%. Sciocid, 4.40%, right? But then versus Farmingdale, 1.93%. East Meadow, 2.25%. Bethpage, 3.05%. So I think you could get those rankings up a little better there, okay? 2.87%. Why don't our seniors participate in as many advanced placement classes as those districts? So now, I asked at a Board meeting if this Board severed their association with the National School Board Association. Never received an answer, just like many of the questions I ask you. But you will answer one day, believe me. So what I'm curious about is, can you answer if the Nassau and Suffolk School Board Association is affiliated with the National School Board Association? And let me tell you something. The School Board Association says Nassau County has no authority over student masking. What about the school tax guarantee? And the county being responsible for the school's portion of the tax grievances? I would say that gives the county the authority, since the property tax assessment has been permitted to exist as it has for decades. So for example, the county paid out $17.2 million to homeowners for the property assessed grievances, and according to the school tax guarantee, 2/3 of that $17 million through our county taxes, we had to pay. So we were double taxed on our schools. You guys got your money, but then $17.2 million had to be returned for the grievances. That's called the school tax guarantee. And you remember when the county executive tried to rescind that? What was it, like 10 years ago? And you and your superintendents all got together and filed a lawsuit? Not one of these politicians has revised that school tax guarantee law from 1948. So now, we're going to go into
Mr. Roth, 30 seconds, please. 30 seconds, please.
Your minutes from your last meeting that you interrupted. This was asked and answered a number of times, but you didn't answer it correctly. You were supposed to post the minutes. Now, I came up here last meeting and told you that you accidentally posted the wrong minutes, the November minutes at the last meeting. I asked you, what are those laptops, a bunch of props standing behind you that we paid for? I asked you to go onto the website and see that you posted the wrong minutes. It's hilarious listening to that recording, because what happens is, right after you're done interrupting me, I don't know how many times, Goldberg, you approved the November minutes that were sitting on your website before they were even approved. You took it down a couple days. I got the screenshot of it. You better learn some respect, I'm telling you.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll see. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. You're welcome.
Good evening. Diane Sunday, 92 William Street, Farmingdale. Hi. I have, mostly you know, I have twins here at Howard. I don't know if you guys were aware, they came home this week to say that their wind ensemble was not able to play as of right now. We understand that you have asked the bands to play in a larger area for right now, which I totally understand. I have been told that sixth-grade recess has to happen in the auditorium. We reached out to the teacher first to find out, and she said, yes, as of right now, they cannot play. I just wanted to bring to your attention, in case something's going on here at Howard, doesn't a graded class supersede recess? So if you could please look into figuring out how, because my children are trying to get ready for an Isma. I'm praying that it will happen. And also, in the high school, I would like them to play in the wind ensemble there. And as we all know, it's an invited band, so they need to play, play, play. They're in eighth grade. Next year is high school. So if you can please look into that. Second thing, I also don't know if you're aware, we've never received the results for the state assessments from last year. So if somebody could please look into that. I don't know if it's a grade-wide or if it's a, you know, school-wide, but I myself have not received assessments. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak during this session?
Eric Mile, 25 Dale Drive, Farmingdale, New York. It's going to be a little long, so I'm going to do my best. The non-governing paid membership organization are weighing in on our children. NSSBA is a paid membership organization comprised of local school board members. Their first priority is the oath they took for the elected position. NYSSBA is a paid membership group comprised of school board members, dues paying to them, provide resources and services to members. They are lobbyists. Neither of these organizations require mandated participation, as there are many school boards across the state that are not members or participating in either or neither as a regulation or a law-enforcing body with no jurisdiction over the actions of any school boards in the state New York. The letter written by Mike Kelly of NYSSBA does not have any legal standing and is nothing more than his opinion. Ironically, when the most recent extension of the regulation 2.60 replaced the August 2.60 extension for the New York State Department of Health, slipping in removing of mask breaks for any student, both organizations sat silent, as did NICE. NICE is a lobbyist lobbying behind closed doors to keep masks on. They sent out tweets Thursday and Friday against unmasking our children. Many directives came down from NICE to push for going remote prior to and after the break. They are not fighting for the best interest of the students, and the only thing NICE has lobbied for has been keeping schools closed, masking for Cuomo last year to lift the spring break travel quarantine requirements. Our kids have been made to sit and eat lunch like prisoners in the state penitentiary. Our kids couldn't play with friends at recess without masks or sit with kids at lunch. Our kids have been harassed by teachers, teacher aides, for mask-wearing. They're starting to think they're bad and the... It's just not working, excuse me. Our kids are made to sit in freezing cold rooms because the COVID protocols dictate leaving a window open. Our kids live active lives outside. This is assured at this point. They're in other people's cars. They play sports. They're everywhere without masks but in school. We have questions for the Farmingdale lawyers, Farmingdale School District lawyers. Can you give legal explanation as to the difference of Cuomo operating under executive order given by the Assembly and Hokel not? Can you explain the legality around local government home rule power? What law grants NICE final authority over the school board and their decision-making? What law protects school boards from the threat of removal of the state aid by the governor?
30 seconds, sir.
Is there a list under what circumstance a district would lose state aid? Where in New York State and the U.S. Constitution are the ultimate powers granted to NICE over local law and home rule law? Can you explain where and when the circuit process existed in regards to the August regulations and the December determination and subsequent extension? What metrics have been used to keep determination extension viable? What data has been used, and can we get a copy of it? Can you explain the legal difference between the general public executive order, county workers' executive order, and the school board executive order since Hokel has only responded to one with a threat of funding? Can you explain Hokel's statement 121321 when she filed the extension of determination? She clearly stated, "I cannot enforce this determination or force counties to comply, but I'm hopeful that counties and local private businesses will comply."
Mr. Moore, I'm sorry. Can you come back? Thank you, sir.
You'll get yours!
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak at this time?
Hi, Patty Logedius, 509 Secatog Avenue. I just want to leave you with one thing that my daughter came home and said last week. She's in fifth grade at Salzman, and I'm going to get choked up, but she came home and she said, "Mom, today they had different administrators in their building last week because the other two were COVID." And she came in, she said, "Mom, we got a paw today." And I said, "That's great." Like, it's the reward system at Salzman. And I said, "For what?" She said, "They came in and said everybody had their mask up above their nose and everyone had their mask on." This is what we're rewarding in our schools? Come on now. That's straight from a fifth grader's mouth. She was so happy that that's what she got a paw from. How would you feel being on that end? It's disgusting. You need to fix this.
To piggyback on, I'm sorry, Jennifer Zoidis, 80 Lockwood Avenue. To piggyback off on what everybody's saying, I am a New York City school teacher. What I see is disgusting. I am happy that my children are dealers. I am happy that it's not as bad as where I am. Everybody out there is drinking the Kool-Aid. You follow the science, vaccinated or not vaccinated, people are catching it. It has nothing to do with that at this point, but I can tell you right now, I am a special education teacher out there, and their social and emotional learning is being poisoned. I have never seen students doing so poorly because of their own self-worth. They cannot see facial expressions. They cannot see their teachers. They cannot see a smile. We welcome them into our rooms, and they cannot see us. It's disheartening. I have a five-year-old, and I have a two-year-old, and I pray that this only gets better, but there was hope given to us. Please don't take that away from us. Please really look into it. I'm asking you, and I'm asking you for half the people in here. And you know what? Some people feel better with it, and some people feel okay without it. It should be up to a parent's choice. That's it. I don't care if people wear a mask. My daughter doesn't care if the person next to her has it on or not. It's not about that. It's about personal choice and a family's choice, and that's really what it comes down to. Every parent knows how to protect their own child. And if that parent feels that a mask is going to protect them, then that's their choice. If a parent feels that their child has a good immune system and that they can be healthy and do that on their own, then that's their choice. But we just ask you, please don't cower behind the threats of the government. There's other ways around this. We ask you, please don't cower behind them. We're not here to bash you. We're here asking for your help. We don't know what else to do. That's why we're here. I've never been to another Board meeting, and I don't want to come back. I'm here because I'm begging and pleading, don't sweep this one under the rug. Don't. That's all we ask. Think about it, please.
Jimmy Zoidis, 80 Lockwood Avenue. That's my wife. We have a five- and a two-year-old. To my knowledge, none of the school districts in Nassau County have removed the mask mandate yet. I'm not sure. But you have an opportunity to be a leader and be the first one to do it and set the trend for the rest of the county. I'm sure none of you want your children masked, five, six, 10, 13, 14-years-old. Like she said, it's detrimental to their social skills. It's awful. They're breathing in their germs all day. It's disgusting. I think we can all agree on that. Be a leader. Lead the county into this. They're not going to cut funding from every school in the entire county. It's ridiculous. They don't even have the power to do that. But you're up there to be the voice for us. Lead the county, lead the way, be the first one there and have other schools follow. That's all I got.
Parsa Karimi, address on file. It's, I have three kids that go to Northside. I just can't believe that we gotta stand here and beg a bunch of you for permission for our kids to go to school for hours a day without their mask on their face. The world's gotten mad when we have to ask a bunch of strangers, "Can our kids breathe freely, please?" This is where we're at. March 2020 will be, what, two years now? Twenty-one, twenty-two? How much more science do you need to see that the kids are all right? CDC says 75% of the people that are dying or really getting hurt from this virus have four or more comorbidities. How many kids go to this school with one comorbidity? Right away, as soon as this unelected person slithers her way into a position we're once slithered out of, right away you're gonna use that as an excuse to say, "Oh, no, she said it, she said it." There's nothing official about it. Show us you give a damn. Defy her, go with the county exec who has the closest control over how we live here. We're not in Albany, we're in Nassau County. If our Nassau County executive says freedom, we go with freedom. Let's stand up and see if she's actually got any kind of clout to take funding away. Because as you can see, we really don't give a damn about the money. We'll come up with another way, if she even wins, to get the funding away. Okay? We're getting really tired of asking. It's absurd that I have to ask you for my three kids to go to school without a mask on. Okay?
Karine Clogacy, 52 Walnut Avenue East. As we know, there is currently no New York State executive order mask mandate since Hokel does not have emergency powers. The governor's website for the commissioner's determination on indoor masking pursuant to 10 NYC RR 2.60 currently states, "It is our expectation that New Yorkers will understand the importance of following this requirement. Enforcement will be done by the local health departments." There are currently 29 counties in this state that have openly said that they are not enforcing a mask mandate. Bruce Blakeman oversees the Nassau County Department of Health. His executive order is telling them to stand down in regards to enforcing the governor's mask mandate. New York State has recently proven that they're trying to circumvent the legislative process with these mask mandates by simply making statements from our governor. If we allow this to transpire, what is to stop them from doing it to get vaccines into these buildings and running it through NICEID and saying that it's law? Dr. Larry Eisenstein, Nassau County Department of Health Commissioner, was quoted as saying just yesterday, "Schools need to do what's right for their individual district." You've heard from plenty of parents over the past several months that our children are hurting. They are hurting in more ways than ever. I have seen my children cry more times than I should ever have to as a parent. This is another indication that the Nassau County Department of Health is referring back to local school boards. You were given the right by executive order. We need to consult with our lawyers to see what we are doing about this, because there is nothing in New York State law right now that says that this local executive order should not prevail. A board of ed can take a vote on anything that it wants to. So regardless of the executive order, will you, our board, stand in front of us and tell us that you are on our side for our children?
Barbara Abud, my address is on file. This has been a long road. Bruce Blakeman, last week, signed those executive orders restoring parental rights and restoring power back to the board, to all of you. He gave us the sword and shield, now it's time to go slay some dragons. We have to take our power back. The vaccines are being voted on in February. If that comes, our kids, one, they'll never be at a mask, and two, the vaccines will be a mandate in order to even attend school. The Locust Valley Board Meeting last night, did any one of you take a chance to watch it? It was really great. That was, that's a board that actually is fighting for the children. You should take a lesson from them. They need, they need boards like us at Farmingdale to stand with them, because Massapequon, Locust Valley cannot do this alone. They cannot do this without your support. If all of Nassau County stands up, what are they gonna do? This isn't a, this is not about a law, this is about funding. And I think all of us are here to say, our children are not for sale. Do something. Make a motion today and do something.
Would anybody else like to speak at this point in time? I call for a motion to approve the minutes of December 1st meeting. Mr. Roth, you're out of order. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st, 2021 regular meeting.
All in favor? Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
So during the past month, there have been a number of correspondences or letters, emails received by the board. The first one is regarding the posting of minutes, which Mr. Roth did bring up. That was rectified. There's a request for video footage from the November Election Day. There's a request for security logs also from Election Day. There's apparent concern that we received regarding her middle school child. There is a request for digital media files for board meetings. We received a copy of a letter regarding opposition to vaccine mandates and a request to lessen the mask-wearing in schools. And then finally, you had a parent response to the district's return to live instruction after the holiday recess. They wanted us to stay remote. The board has received copies of all of these emails in their update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So it's been, wow, it was a wonderful holiday season. I'm gonna talk about concerts. Everybody was all in for the concerts, parents. It was great to have it open to our families. I know we were able to livestream also, which was really terrific. Parents, children, staff, everybody should be very proud of themselves. The children really outdid themselves again. I think as someone had mentioned, you know, there was a short period of time for them to get ready, and it didn't make a difference. They were just very happy to be out there and performing for all of us. So it was very exciting to be a part of that, and I know a lot of us were able to attend many of, if not all of, the concerts, with the culmination of the one at the high school and the Hallelujah Chorus and even a visit from Charlie Brown. So it was actually a really great evening, and if you've never had an opportunity to go to one of the concerts at the high school and don't have children there yet, you're in for a real treat. So definitely try to attend or tune in live if you can. Also, last night I was virtual for the Woodard Parkway PTA meeting, and again, kudos to them. They, the PTA has done a phenomenal job with keeping everybody very involved, planning certain things throughout the holidays that kept some of our children very busy. Last night was great, they did the Student of the Month, and there was about 50-plus families virtually with others in attendance, so it was really very nice to be able to recognize those children. They jumped around, some had their dogs in their laps and their stuffed animals, and Grandma and Grandpa were there with them, so it was really great that they were able to share in their accomplishments. I think that's important, that we don't lose sight of any of that, and Woodard Parkway did a really great job in recognizing those students. So again, kudos and congratulations to all the students and the staff there that have been working really hard to keep things normal for the children. So thank you to all of you for that.
Well, I just wanted to talk about the, before the break, the Dekta Hall's holiday breakfast at the high school. Our very own Anthony Giudano played a Santa. He was amazing for the day. It was a great event, well-done by our drama department, all the teachers and staff that participated and the community members, and it was really a great morning.
I just have two short reports. The Farmingdale Public Library, they've started their budget season. They're starting to work on their budget for this upcoming year. And the other, next week, Anthony, Mike, and myself, we start with Bozey's and their budget season. So hopefully next month we'll have some news for you as far as what they're trying to do for the upcoming year.
Okay. Arlene and I are on the wellness committee that had met last month virtually, and we recognized Dr. Joan Ripley for her retirement. She headed that committee for many, many years, and we have the pleasure of welcoming Maureen Maloney as being the head of that committee, although Maureen participated in the meeting many, many times. We all worked together. We discussed a little bit about the Special Olympics and some of the activities without even knowing the date, so I'm glad that we know the date now. So full force and ahead we go. We also had safety committee meeting, a lot of meetings last month. Safety, Arlene and Suzanne and I participated on that in different ways, and we met virtually for that committee as well. Glenn Zakiin headed that, so that's a really busy committee that we all participate in. Talk about security in the buildings, we get some reports, we had an update on the playgrounds and security and all that, just to name a few of the items we discussed. Also had legislative action committee. Dr. Brennan is heading, leading us on that committee. Suzanne and myself were on that committee, and we meet with many of our representatives, legislators, assembly people, and senators with our students. And it's a great committee to be on because we get the sense of what the students want to discuss as well. We met with Assemblyman Durso and Assemblyman Micklin, and we have one, I think it's tomorrow, right, with Assemblywoman Jean-Pierre, Kimberly Jean-Pierre. And we also have Mike Montesano we're gonna be meeting with, so we have a lot to go and we have a lot under our belts, so the conversations are there. Let's see, what else? Chambers, we had our elections in December with the holiday party and swearing-in ceremony, and Suzanne D'Amico and myself were on the board, remain on the board of the chamber. So the other meeting we had was policy. Mario and myself and Arlene partake in that, and what Mr. Zakiin described tonight, today, was the child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in a domestic setting was much discussion. And the policy meeting right now is meeting virtually, and we have one this Friday as well. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other board members like to speak? Good. Ralph and Pial. Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to ask their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer for us. The meeting is now open.
Hey, listen, grown men were weeping, policemen were turning in their badges. Now, let me tell you, you know, you think that this board is gonna do anything for you? Okay? Let me explain something here. What they do is they're very good at fabricating. So I'm not gonna name the principal, unfortunately, he was new to the district at the time, but it was October 2013. Bring it back down memory lane. You claimed you had an extensive security system in the high school, junior high, yet a student walked in and robbed the place twice. But at that time you had no perimeter cameras on your elementary school. So I go to my elementary school that I graduated from, and you get this principal to sign this affidavit, and God help him when I run into him in person again. At the conclusion of the meeting, I continue to speak to the petitioner about security. The petition was making numerous discouraging remarks about the district with respect to our security. What was more disconcerting to me is that he ascertained a vast amount of information about our security in the building, such as a prized caption television system, which was no longer used, operation security cameras, specific wiring. This indicated that he spent a significant amount of time observing the inside of the building, which was quite disturbing, because he didn't have any children in the district that died. Right? Now, I told this principal that my father worked in the building for 20 years. I told him that my mother still worked in the building. I told that principal that I've been working in schools since 1990, over 125 buildings at the time. And you have this guy write this thing like I'm stalking the building. But see, that's coming from realized this board had me investigated by the FBI, claiming that I was gonna commit and act as school violence in order to prove their security vulnerabilities. So you got a board that violated somebody's constitution rights four times and had them investigated by the FBI. So you think that these people are gonna give a crap what you say? No, I'm sorry, if they had any nerve, they would all be resigning right now. But right now, like they said, you can turn around and you can tell that governor to take their state aid and take a hike, all right? You can make a vote right now on whether or not you're gonna appear, right now! And let me tell you something, if I wanted to any of you on the street, I'm gonna embarrass you, just like the Democrats do. Oh, do I, wait, what happened to the five minutes? Huh?
Thirty seconds, Mr. ...
No, what happened to the five minutes? And if I bring down a time clock, next thing you know, you're gonna call the bomb squad in.
Eric Morrow, 25 Dale Drive. Just want to finish up my final statement and then two questions. So again, this is for the Farmingdale District lawyers. So number 12, is the Nassau County Department of Health fining anyone for not following mask mandates? Is the fire marshal authorized to shut down businesses or events? Are the Nassau County Police Department arresting anyone? If this board of ed elects to vote for parental choice following the Nassau County executive order, what actual legal ramifications do we face? Can you explain the legal difference between a determination and an executive order? And can you explain why Hokel, only five days after filing the regulation of New York State Department of Health for mask-wearing in schools, did not use the emergency session opportunity she called on September 5th to make mask-wearing into law? We need to know how each one of you voted, so we know who voted how. If not, we have to think that you all voted no for our kids. Paul, I sincerely think you're probably the best superintendent in Nassau County. You could be the best in history if you're the first one to do this. Now, I do want to say one thing, and the worry that I have is, is this board worried that Hokel will remove Paul if we take the masks? Because if that's the case, we need to know that that's the Because if that's the case, we need to know that that's the scenario and see how we fight that. Because we do want to keep Paul. Um, I know that state aid, I know that state aid is $40 million, uh, to this town. So that being said, we can't sell these kids out for $40 million, $100 million. If I told you tomorrow I'd give you $100 million, but you were going to die the day after, would you take it? No. That's when you realize money doesn't matter at that point. These kids need to breathe. These kids need voices. These kids need to hear their teachers. That's the thing. So I just wanted you guys to know that. Thank you.
The only follow-up, uh, go ahead.
Are you going to have a motion? Only takes one of you to set a motion and one of you to agree to it for there to be a vote for next month's meeting? That's what we're all here to ask you.
I'm sorry, can, are you, are you speaking, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name this time.
Barbara Bood.
Thank you, ma'am.
For the reasons we stated earlier, we have no plans to vote at this point in time. Thank you.
So are you, so you're, so there's no one on this board that's willing to stand up for our children? None of you? Okay. So January 27th, I will be hosting in Rockville Center a meeting on how to run for school board? I hope there's some people here because we got some people to replace.
Nicole Napo, my address is on file. I am disgusted, disgusted. Thirteen, from what I can see from back there of you, two of you can't sit there and stand up for kids and you say you're all about the kids? Really? Really? And you have children yourself? Are you kidding me? How, how much is it going to take for you to stand up and, and, and just fight against this governor? She has no laws, zero. Mr. Goldberg, you're a disgrace. And that's being nice right now. You are an absolute disgrace. And when your seat is up, be sure of it that you will be voted out.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, it is this year? Good, okay, great. And there's, and there's another seat, right? If I'm not mistaken? There's two seats up. Be prepared and be ready to fight because we've had it. We've had it. You're all a disgrace, every single one of you. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like, like to speak at this point in time? Would anybody else like to speak at this time?
Parsa Karimi. Um, I don't know about any other parents here, but, you know, we keep telling you to fight. I think it's time for us to fight first. I think I'm going to send my kids to school tomorrow without a mask. I'm going to see what you're going to do and we'll see about where we go from there. So I'll be the first to start. My kids are going to school tomorrow without a mask on. They're not wearing it. That's it.
Karine Clogacy, 52 Walnut Avenue East. I think the major frustration from all of us here is that we are feeling unheard. We elected all seven of you to be the voice for our children and not one of you has spoken to us at all this entire year. You finally gave us the opportunity to stand here and speak to you and we're speaking to nothing. We are getting nothing in return, month after month after month. What will it take for you guys to finally hear our cries that our children are hurting? You took an oath to stand up for our children, to stand up for the United States Constitution and for the New York State Constitution, not to stand up for, to Governor Kathy Hochul and Rosa, the NICID and all the other, the school board associations. That's wonderful. But you guys took an oath to stand up for our children. It is time that you start to show us that you are going to do so. If not, like we had said, we are going to replace you because enough is enough.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Jimmy Zoidas, 80 Lockwood Avenue. You guys all have the opportunity to just do what we, everyone in this room knows is the right thing to do. And you would pretty much be considered heroes for doing that for the children by just doing what everyone here thinks is right. This, there's about, what, 25 people here? I, if nothing gets done, I'm sure it's going to get more and more packed. And you've seen school board meetings all over the country and it's absurd what the hell's been going on around there. This is pretty calm. I'm not trying to promote anything. I just, I'm asking you guys to just do the right thing. You'll be looked at as heroes. You, you lead the way, other towns will follow. Do the right thing. There's, it's children with masks. We, we all know it's nonsense. They sit next to each other in lunch without a mask for an hour, then they go put them back on to sit next to each other for the rest of the day. It's, it's nonsense. You stand up. You don't stand up against the governor for this, they're going to bring on the vaccines. What's going to happen then? I could pretty, I'll tell you, my kids won't be coming here if they're forced with vaccines. I'm pretty sure nobody else here will. If you don't stand up now for us, it's going to keep coming and coming and coming. You can't continue to relinquish your power to somebody who has no authority over it. Just do the right thing. That's all we're asking. That's it.
Paul?
Vote for it.
No, no schools have voted yet on this. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Want to say anything? Okay. Would anybody else like to speak at this point in time?